Okay, the Newport Beach City Council Study Session for November 10th, 2009 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present except for Councilmember Webb.
Okay, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, a couple of items. On number four, we're going to be looking to renew the police use contract. And I, just as kind of a heads up, I wanted to pull that and have the city manager just outline the basic terms, the compensation, you know, the length, and also the duties that are expected. And then also on number six, I believe that's our environmental documents to prepare the, for the disposal, and as the councilmembers working on that realize, you know, if we missed the boat, we missed the boat. And so a lot of criticality to that one. And I just wanted to ask, you know, are steps being taken so that we can ensure that we will execute on that in a timely fashion? Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Hen?
I have, I have nothing.
Uh, Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
No items?
And I have no items.
With the Planning Department head, please wake up.
Big yawn. Sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to current business. We have a number of items on our agenda this afternoon. Mr. Kiff, I saw that Jan just walked in, so can we proceed on schedule or do we need to move the agenda around still?
I think the question is whether or not one of Jan's other board members is here. Would you still prefer to wait a little bit?
Yeah, Steve Sheldon is trying to drive up from San Diego, so he's doing his best.
Okay, well, we had planned on that contingency.
Thank you.
So, we will go out of order here and we'll go to item number five, which is the Green Building Task Force update.
And Councilmember Gardner is going to present this to you.
Thank you. We've had almost a year that we've been working on it. And over the course of the year, we've done a number of things which are indicated here in the so-called white paper. We did a lot of research. We have a list of green building programs in other communities and what they've been doing. We looked at leads and other systems, point systems that qualify and quantify green buildings. And we advise council on certain new laws coming down. And then we got down to business of the real tasks of the task force, and one of which was to look at the city and see what the city could do to improve its footprint. And the city already does a lot of things, particularly when it comes to water quality. We've been a leader. But we listed a number of areas where we think we should be, increase our awareness, to be sure that staff is looking at these options every time when the city is doing a building, or the city's departments are doing things. Zero-waste management, for example. We don't expect to get to zero-waste management. We should look at the principles and be trying to reduce what we use in terms of waste and that sort of thing. So, you can see, some of these are actually not expensive. Some of them are money-saving. The second one is trees. Trees are a terrific cooler. The canopies provide natural cooling. And we'd like to have General Services look and see if there are areas in the city where we could extend our trimming, our period between trims, to create a lovely canopy and save a, save one year's worth of trimming fees for that particular neighborhood. Now, obviously, some neighborhoods want their trees trimmed because of view issues and that sort of thing. But there are other areas where that would not be a factor. I know some departments have conducted energy audits, but this is, again, basically no cost to the city because both the gas company and the Edison Company will come in and do them in terms of those particular things. We're looking at noise pollution. We'll be getting something from EQAC soon on considering whether that's something we should look at. Solar power, we just got something on solar power and participating with the county, and that was a recommendation. And then something that we wanted the city to consider was some kind of environmental coordinator, not a new position and not a full-time position at all, but somebody in the city or somebodies in the city that would see that there's help, that there's greater coordination. Because one of the things we have found over the years is that we sometimes, departments don't always talk to each other as much on these sort of issues. So, what we'd like on this area is simply to be able to go back to the appropriate departments and get their reactions to these and come back if the cities, if the council so directs. And then a very vital part of this was our education information, because obviously we can only legislate so much and to such a fine degree, and the more we can educate people and inform them, the better off we are. And what we want to do was create a resource, because one of the things that generated the Green Building Task Force was the queries we got from people and their frustrations. I would like to make my house more energy efficient, but I don't have, where do I go? Where do I start? And often that whole, I mean, the internet is a great tool, but it can also be overwhelming, and there's so much information. So, we thought that we could develop materials, and then what we would like to have happen is to have a, basically a green section of the city's, on the city's website. And this would be where anybody could go, just click on the logo there, and you could get all sorts of information. We've attached a sample of the Green Building Guidelines, and again, these are guidelines, and these are based on the California codes. It's not something that we whimsically whipped up. They're the work of actually of Brian Jeanette and his firm largely, which we went over and reviewed, so that someone interested could click on these and they could see not only what they are, but why and what the benefit is. That's something that the codes don't necessarily touch on. So, we can do other things, a green rack at the, at the library, for example. There are all sorts of brochures that are produced. There's no need for the city to do this. There's no need for us to reinvent anything. But the, the county has a number of water quality pamphlets that I think we've displayed over the years. The gas company has them, the Edison Company has them. Opportunities for, again, to make it easy for people to accomplish what they would like to accomplish. So, what I would like, what we would like, are two things, and it's unfortunate we're going out, out of the order here, because members of the task force are going to be here, and I hope later on that we can recognize them, because they have put in tremendous hours. But what we'd like, as I say, is for the council to authorize the city manager to take our suggestions for the city and send them to the appropriate departments and get their reactions, to come back to the council. And then for the council to give us authority as far as the, the green building site on the web, to take this to the Media and Communications Committee for review and refinement, because this has not been to, for example, attorneys or anything like that. So that's what we would ask, and then what we will do, in either case, is sunset into, into the sunset, we'll ride off into sunset and have accomplished our task in the year we were given.
Okay. Any comments? Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I'd like to commend you and the group here, Nancy, for the work that you've done over the last year. It's clear that you've put in a lot of time on this, and I think it's just terrific. One of the things that caught my eye in here was the encouragement of alternative transportation modes. And, you know, I'm involved with a couple of things right now that are along those lines. The first, through the EDC, we're working on a water taxi proposal that I hope will be coming back for further consideration within the next thirty or sixty days or so. We've also been working, Councilwoman Gardner and I, looking at a possible bike sharing program for the city, at least on a limited test basis. And then through the parking studies that we've been doing in Baboa Village and in McFadden Square and other areas of the city, there may be applications for bike station kind of concepts to be incorporated as a part of the design in some of those things in terms of solutions, where we're, we're moving at the margin, two or three or four percentage points of habitual use of cars into non-car types of modes of transportation. And so, I, I think that's an important thing to encourage, and I'd like to gauge the sense of council here. I think if we're willing to spend a few dollars, we can get the necessary initial studies done. For example, for this bike sharing thing, for $3,500, we could get us an initial study that gives us a feasibility at least on a proposal to look at there. And perhaps to use Walker Management, as you and I talked earlier, Nancy, about, perhaps use them to some extent to evaluate these alternative modes that are coming back. Help us to evaluate that. So, I would like to encourage us to do that, but I'd like to get the sense of council as well on that.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Curry?
Well, I also would like to commend Councilmember Gardner and the committee for the work that they're doing. It's, as some of you know, our city and every other city in California is under legislative mandate to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases that are generated within our boundaries. And, you know, all of us are grappling with how to do that, and some of the strategies that Nancy's committee have talked about are likely to be part of any strategy that we would use that would, that would effectively address that mandate. So I think it's going to become an increasingly important issue as we, as we go forward. And to Councilmember Hen's question, if it's $3,500, I'd like to see a scope of work for, for what it's going to be costing, or what it's going to be for to evaluate bicycles, but I think that's something we ought to do. I'm perhaps less convinced about the waterborne system, but I think the bicycle system is certainly one we ought to be moving forward on.
I was curious, is, I thought for sure you would come up with some recommendations on, like expedited processing for remodels that met green standards, or permit assistance or some things like that? And I was just wondering if you ever discussed them?
We did. We spent a lot of time discussing it, and we finally moved away from that. We just felt that there were, whether we were getting into awards or, I mean, there were so many different aspects that we looked at, and we decided that all of them had problems. And they were, in many cases, seemed to generate more, more problems in dealing with them than they, than they solved. We had, we were very fortunate to have several members of the building department, including Jay Albatar, the director, with us at times, and so we could bounce it off real world. I mean, that was one thing we were very concerned about. It's one thing for those of us who are not in the business to sit there and think, wouldn't it be wonderful if we all did this? So Jay could come back and say, well, yes, it would be wonderful, but here's why it doesn't work. So we, we did consider it, and we decided not to go take that route. We were not going to recommend anything.
Okay. Okay. Well, I too think the committee did a good job on this, and there really isn't anything in here that I couldn't support. Any other comments, council? Anybody from the audience want to comment on the green building standards? Okay. What's the proper action? We can't really take action at a study session, so what's the next step? Mr. Kiff?
I think as Councilmember Gardner suggested, I will go ahead and work this through the management team and get some feedback from the department heads, and then agendaize for the Media and Communications Committee the aspects of the green button on the website to allow that to be a little bit more user-friendly there.
Okay.
And they'll report back to you.
Okay. That sounds good. I don't see Mr. Sheldon yet, so...
Andy Trump?
Huh?
We're going to start in a minute.
Okay.
Steve has been the last of our program.
Okay.
He still hasn't.
Okay, well, then the next item's going to be a presentation by the Orange County Water District Board.
Thank you. Not the whole board.
Well, some of the board.
Should have been two of us. I am thrilled to be here. Good afternoon, Mayor Selich and members of the council. For the record, my name is Janda Bay, and I am one of ten directors at the Orange County Water District. With me today is Mike Marcus, our general manager, and I'll say a little bit more about him later. He does the big part of the program. I just want to give you some opening comments. Steve and I represent Newport Beach. It's divided down the middle, about jamboree. I have the west side, Steve has the east side. So you're fortunate in having two directors on the board. If you ever have a problem, you can talk to both of us. We also have adjacent cities that we represent. I was appointed to the board in 2001, and it was just a month after I was termed out on the council after eight years. And I just want to say that I totally enjoyed my time here in these chambers, and I miss you all very much, but I get to see you once in a while. Now, I want to talk to you a little bit about water and the big picture that we're dealing with. You know we're in a drought. You've all been versed, I'm sure, on the issues. It's a four-year drought. One of those years, we saw only 3.2 inches of rain all year. And we have lived through it before, and we've recovered, but this time, it's different. As well as low rainfall, we're in a legislative and a judicial drought. Because of the Endangered Species Act of Congress, we are allowed to pump less and less water from the delta in Northern California, which, by the way, gives us less met replenishment water to put into our groundwater basin. So we're struggling with problem of quantity as well, as you. And this ruling is because of the small fish called the delta smelt. You probably all read too much about that one. And it's been designated by the Corps as endangered, and this fish can be drawn into the pumps, is the problem, as we send our water south through the aqueduct to irrigate the farmlands and to satisfy our homes in Southern California with drinking water. Thirdly, we rely on the snowpack in the mountains, and we've had 70% of normal snowfall this year. And that's good. And it's as good as having a reservoir with the snowpack sitting on top of the mountains, because as it melts slowly and runs off into our rivers and groundwater basins, it gives us that supply. But the problem is that our weather has been changing, and the warmer temperatures melt the snow too quickly. So it is gone when we really need it, in the late spring and the early summer. Our conservation has helped this year. There's been a lower demand actually on our basin for water than usual, and that's even with an increase in population. So people are doing their part. But as you drive north, many of the fields in the central valley are bare, and there's dust blowing. And there are large signs along Highway Five that declare that we have created a dust bowl, or Congress has created the dust bowl. Here in Orange County, we have less flow in the Santa Ana River, because the upstream cities are recycling their wastewater, instead of sending it into the river, and we depend on the river to recharge that groundwater basin, which, by the way, supplies 62% of our water here in the city, and in the cities in the northern and the central part of the county. So as you can see, our job at the water district is to manage that basin. I want to talk a little bit about Mike Marcus. He's been our general manager for two years, and I want to tell you that his team on the Groundwater Replenishment System project, that took us two or 10 years to plan and construct, has been recognized internationally. And he just returned from Kuwait, where he was given, along with the other engineers on the project, the World Federation Engineers Award. And we are recognized internationally for that, so that's something we can be proud of. And if you haven't taken a tour, I wish you would call and come over, and we'll walk you through it, so you can see how it works. At this point, I want to turn the topic, and Steve got here! What do you know? That's great. Anyway, Mike is up next, and Steve is going to sum it up and talk to you about the water bond that we all should be working on for next year. Mike, your turn.
Thank you very much, Director DeBay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here and speak to you this evening. Just to follow up with Jan, even though I've been general manager for two years, I've been an employee of the Orange County Water District for over 21 years. So I have been familiar with the district and was fortunate to have worked on the project, the Groundwater Replenishment System project. What I wanted to do very quickly, however, is talk a little bit about the Orange County Water District, what we do, where we get our water from, and then lead into a little bit about the Groundwater Replenishment System and talk about that project a little bit more in detail. So the Orange County Water District consists of 21 cities in central and northern Orange County, of which Newport Beach is, is a member of the water district. And all those 21 cities overlay this groundwater basin. South Orange County, below the, the black area, does not overlay the groundwater basin, and they cannot benefit from it. So they cannot draw from the groundwater basin as a source of supply. We were created in 1933 by a special act of the state legislature. We're governed by a 10-member board. We encompass a very large area in the lower watershed of the Santa Ana River, and we provide groundwater for 2.3 million people in northern and central Orange County. I mentioned that, so our mission is to manage that groundwater basin, and we are what is referred to as a non-adjudicated basin. In an adjudicated basin, a court actually determines the amount of groundwater that a city is able to extract out of the ground on an annual basis. We do not have those constraints. So our board actually sets the percentage of groundwater that a city can draw out of the ground on an annual basis, and that changes from year to year depending on the condition of the groundwater basin. So as Director DeBay mentioned in her opening remarks, right now that basin production percentage, or BPP, is set at 62%. However, depending on the health of the groundwater basin, that can vary. And in fact, a couple of years ago, it was 82%, where the cities could draw 80, up to 82% of the groundwater supply out of the basin. Historically, it's been about 70 to 75%. But it depends on the condition of the basin, as I mentioned. This, as summarized before, right now, northern and central get 62% of their supply out of the basin. If you live in South County, you're nearly 100% dependent on imported water. So when we say that the, the city, the city of Newport Beach right now can get 62% of their supply from the groundwater basin, what that means is they have to get the remaining 38% from the Metropolitan Water District, through the Municipal Water District of Orange County, here in, in Orange County. Now, the benefit of that is groundwater is about half the cost of imported water. And right now, imported water rates have gone off, and I'm sure the council is well aware of that, I'm sure staff has informed them of the increases at the Metropolitan Water District. Right now, imported water is about $700 an acre foot, whereas what the water district charges a city to extract an acre foot out of the ground is $249 an acre foot. So are there, there are significant differences in cost, and it's a tremendous benefit to overlay this natural resource. As far as the water district and its operational facilities, we actually start up in Prado Dam. We have over 400 acres of constructed wetlands behind Prado Dam. So we are, we naturally treat half the Santa Ana River flows before it passes through Prado Dam. It then goes to our recharge facilities up in the Anaheim area, the Anaheim and Orange area. So if you've ever traveled at the end of the 55 freeway in the 91, around Tustin Avenue, you'll see a big lake off to the side of the freeway. That's actually one of our recharge basins. So we actively take those Santa Ana River flows, let them naturally percolate within the riverbed between Imperial and Ball Road, and then we have a series of off-stream basins up in the Anaheim where we recharge that Santa Ana River flow. And then in Fountain Valley, we have now our Groundwater Replenishment System. And what that will do is it provides recycled water for our seawater barrier, which is in Fountain Valley, which helps keep seawater from infiltrating and contaminating the groundwater basin. And then half that supply, we pump up to our recharge facilities in Anaheim to provide an additional source of water for the groundwater basin. This pie chart shows the different supplies for the groundwater basin. This large pie right here, the 145,000, represents 145,000 acre-feet per year of water, and those are base flows of the Santa Ana River. Now, those flows, the Santa Ana River flows on an annual basin, and the reason is, water is in the Santa Ana River, because in the upper watershed, the various cities discharge their wastewater into the Santa Ana River. So they have, they discharge their highly-treated wastewater, which is tertiary-treated wastewater, into the Santa Ana River, and that becomes a major supply of water that we then capture in our recharge facilities. Now, to give you an idea, last year, that 145,000 was 100,000. And you may ask, well, why did those flows go down? Very simply, all those agencies upstream are doing more recycling. So as a result of that recycling, they're putting less water into the river, which means there's less supply for us in Orange County to recharge into our basin. So that will be a challenge in the future. These other pies represent average rainfall. Those are just average numbers, average hydrology. We certainly see in this area anything but average hydrology. So that will vary tremendously, and that has an impact on the supply to the basin. The little red pie is something called replenishment water, and we get that water normally from the Metropolitan Water District. After they've served all their needs, if they have any water left over, what they'll do is go to groundwater agencies and sell water to them at a discounted rate. And we have been receiving up to 65,000 acre-feet a year, on average, over the last 40 years, up until two years ago, when it became unavailable. And it's been unavailable over the last three years. In fact, MET says that that water will now only be available two in every 10 years moving forward. Those are their projections. So that pie drops out of the picture. Luckily, we came, we added this additional supply, the 72,000, which is the Groundwater Replenishment System. So had we not had that additional supply of water or built that facility, you can see what effect that would have had on the supply in the basin, which would have meant that that pumping percentage would have been significantly lower, probably down in the 40%, which meant that all the cities would have had to purchase that much more metropolitan water. And what this graph shows is the overdraft in the groundwater basin. So, up, up at the zero point, what that indicates is when the basin is full. So you can see in roughly 1960, 69, there again in 80, in the early 80s, we had a full basin. When we had droughts in the mid-'70s and the early '90s, that's when the basin was lowered, or we began overpumping, or it was overdrafted. You can see that a few years ago, we had a couple of years back-to-back of fairly good rainfall, and we filled the basin- And we filled the basin up fairly significantly. However, the last three years, we've been in a drought, we've been overpumping to a certain extent. So you can see that we've dropped off. And we're almost at four-hundred-thousand acre-feet of overdraft. Now what's significant is we have an operating range of about five-hundred thousand. Once we get to five-hundred thousand, even our seawater barrier is unable to keep the seawater from coming inland. So we, we never want to see it dip below five-hundred thousand. What that means is we'll be monitoring that very closely this year and next year. And if we see it continually decreasing, we'll have to lower our BPP and reduce demands on the groundwater basin. And that's why it's so significant that we find additional new supplies of water for the groundwater basin. And that's why this recycling project, the Groundwater Replenishment System, is so important. So why do we need the GWR system? Director DeBay mentioned the challenges in the delta, also a drought on the Colorado River. The Colorado River has actually seen a drought the last nine out of ten years. Have you seen pictures of Lake Mead, Lake Powell? They're significantly lower in storage. So now we turn to the Groundwater Replenishment System and just exactly what is the Groundwater Replenishment System? Well, it's a new seventy-million gallon-per-day advanced water purification facility. And what it does is it takes wastewater that otherwise would be discharged to the ocean, and it recycles it or reuses it. So it takes a secondary effluent, this wastewater, that otherwise would go to the ocean, runs it through an advanced purification process consisting of microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV light with hydrogen peroxide. By the time it gets through this process, the water is actually of near-distilled water quality. Extremely pure water. And it provides seventy-two thousand acre-feet of water per year, which is enough new water for a half a million people. The other thing we like to show or talk about is this is actually a joint partnership between the Orange County Sanitation District and the Orange County Water District. What happened in the early nineties is the Sanitation District was having to look at building a new, a second ocean outfall. And the Water District was looking at expanding their Water Factory Twenty-One, which at that time provided water for the seawater barrier. Now, one can only imagine the challenges of building another five-mile outfall off the coast of Huntington Beach. So the Sanitation District said, hey, Water District, if you build your plant a little bit bigger and you are able to treat any of our peak wet-weather flows, we'll contribute the money that we would have contributed to building an ocean outfall and put it towards this project. And that's exactly what happened. So UCSD, the Sanitation District, contributed half the capital costs for the Groundwater Replenishment System. As a result, when they have a peak wet-weather flow, we guarantee that we will safely treat those flows and discharge them back into the Santa Ana River. This shows a little pictorial of the actual treatment process, the microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV light. A hundred percent of the treatment is treated through this process. And what the microfiltration does is effectively removes any bacteria, protozoa, or suspended solids out of the water. So it's the first step in the treatment process. The real workhorse of the treatment process is the reverse osmosis. And that process removes any dissolved minerals, pharmaceuticals, or viruses in the water. So that's a real important process. However, there are some very, very small, low-weight molecular organics that will get through the reverse osmosis, such as NDMA and nitrosodimethylamine and one-four dioxide. And so we've added the final step, which is the UV light with hydrogen peroxide. And that effectively destroys those low molecular weight contaminants. Then there again, with that water, half the water, about thirty-five million gallons, goes into our seawater barrier. The other half, we pump up to the Anaheim area and recharge into our groundwater basin. The project funding, the project cost, four-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars. Half the capital cost split equally between the two agencies. As I mentioned, it produced a seventy-two thousand acre-feet, enough for a half a million people. It's expandable to a hundred-and-thirty million gallons per day. We were very, very successful in getting grant funding, ninety-two million dollars. Sixty-seven million through Prop thirteen, the water bond. And then an additional twenty million dollars through the Bureau of Reclamations Title sixteen program. The water we're able to produce right now, last year, for the first year of production, we were able to produce the water at five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars an acre foot. But that includes the loans, that's netting out with the loans. Without any funding, these projects cost anywhere between eight-hundred and eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars an acre foot, which has become very, very cost-competitive with the cost of MET. And we have been operational almost two years now. January two thousand and eight is when we put the project online. The various benefits, we protect the basin from seawater intrusion, provide water to refill the basin in times of drought. What we've done is we've created, in essence, a little bit of a drought-proofing for our water supply. We're not going to have a little delta smelt cause us to turn our plant off. We will be able to run the plant twenty-four-seven, we have total control, locally-controlled project. Another big item, we use half the energy that it takes to import water from northern California. And another thing, we use half the energy that takes to desalinate water. So we always say what we ought to do first, what we need to do first is conserve. And we need to conserve as best we can, as much we can. Second, we need to recycle. And then, third, is kind of a last option, if we still need additional water, look to Another thing I'd like to mention briefly is the community support on the project. Projects like this had failed in the past. And so what we knew early on was that we needed to outreach to the community. So we invested in an outreach program. We went and first built the local base by going to all the cities, the twenty-one cities, getting letters of support from all the councils from those cities, going to the state officials and the Assembly and the Senate, and then the federal level, our congressional delegation and senators, and got letters of support from all of them. We also had the support early on of the environmental community, the Coast Keepers, the surf riders, the Sierra Club, the local health and medical community. We went out, we talked to the Kiwanis, the Chambers, the Rotaries, the Sons and Daughters of the American Revolution, anyone who would listen to us. We went out and we gave presentations. In fact, we gave over twelve-hundred presentations and seven-hundred tours during the past ten-year period. Attempting to educate people about the need for the project and the safety of the project. And to date, we have had absolutely no opposition to the project. So we've been very, very successful in that respect. What's next? We're looking to expand the project. Right now, we're designing the first expansion of the project. So we've been in operation two years, we're looking to expand the plant now from seventy million gallons per day to a hundred million gallons per day. That design will be completed in spring of next year. And then we'll have to see what funding we have in place and then make the decision whether we are able to move forward and construct the next phase. But we are fairly confident, staff is confident, that we will be able to secure some outside funding through the federal government, hopefully through the state, with the future water bond if it passes. There's ample opportunity for recycled water projects. So we would look to that. We're also looking at building a mid-basin injection project to help inject some of this water directly into the principal aquifer in the middle of the basin in the Santa Ana area. And that shows a picture of the overall aerial view. As Director DeBay said, for those council members that haven't visited the plant, and I know several of you have, but for those that have not, we extend that invitation to you. At any time, give us a call, we'd be happy to give you a tour of the plant. And I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today. And I'd like to turn it over to President Sheldon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Steve Sheldon, I am a resident of Newport Beach, constituent. Quickly, my district is kind of McArthur and Jamboree down Newport North, One Ford Road, Big Canyon, I pick up the Port Streets, Harbor View, CDM, and the Peninsula. I don't have Newport North that, or I don't have the Heights, that's what Jamboree has. That's my district here, my division in Newport Beach. I also have the entire city of Irvine and a little bit of Tustin in my division. Just been back from Sacramento, we're very excited about the water bond that passed. There's a lot of good in it, there's a few things we don't like in it, but overall, we can be supportive of it. As the expansion that Mike mentioned earlier, we hope that we can use monies from that water bond to pay for half of our expansion, which makes less money that our taxpayers and your taxpayers have to pay for. That's part of our excitement about the water bond. It has money in it for environmental mitigation for the delta, so that we can hopefully get the canal built and have a steady supply of water from the Bay Delta. A lot of other things in the water bond, I won't go on, it's been a long presentation, but we do appreciate the opportunity to be up here. And we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Counselor McQuarrie?
Yes, is there any way that the city of Newport Beach can be more supportive in terms of what you're trying to accomplish?
Yes, we could present a resolution, that would be one great act. You could add to your legislative goals and policies, perhaps part of the language that we'd like to have on the expansion of our program and other water recycling things. So there are quite a few things that we could sit down with you and go over. Thank you.
Counselor McCurry?
Well, I'd just like to thank Jan and Steve and Mike for coming out today and giving a very cogent and well-explained description of where we sit with water in California, and it truly is a crisis. And we're very fortunate that in Orange County, we have a very well-managed water district and well-governed managed water district that Newport Beach is part of. And we appreciate the efforts of all of you to continue to keep the water flowing when we turn it on at the tap here in our city. And I think for people at home who are concerned about the fact that we have to adjust rates, that we have to encourage conservation, I think you all have made a very good explanation as to why that's the case, not only here in Newport Beach, but across California. And of course, as much as we don't want to have additional bonds and debt, clearly, we have to do something. We have to get these facilities built so water can be moved through the state. And we appreciate the comments there, and certainly we support or I support those efforts moving forward. So thank you.
One last comment I wanted to make. It is our long-term goal to be as independent as possible from the delta, so we're not dependent upon imported water. We're doing our long-term planning to expand these type of programs and find more ways to have local sources of water.
Counselor Webb?
In that light, I know that Costa Mesa draws water out of the colored water aquifer. Are you encouraging any other agencies from trying to take that water? I realize it's a little more expensive to process, but is that another option to us?
We have an agreement with Mesa Consolidated on their colored water program, that it's not part of the BPP. And so I don't know whether we would, they would want to export that water from their district to potentially the city of Newport Beach.
Just curious if I, is that another source that could be drawn upon?
I think all, from my personal opinion, all new water is good water. So if they have extra to share, we should talk about it.
Mike, do you have a comment on that?
I'd just like to say, yeah, Councilmember Webb, right now, the city of Costa Mesa, as you've said, or Mesa Consolidated Water District, does have a facility, as does the Irvine Ranch Water District. They have a colored water facility also in Santa Ana as a part of their Dyer Road wellfield. So those types of projects have been encouraged by the past, that is an additional source of water that could be developed as well in the future.
Thank you for your hospitality.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience want to comment on the Water District presentation? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation by the Arts Commission on Public Art Research for the New City Hall and Park Design.
Right now, we're looking for lost art. It'd be nice to find one of those, wouldn't it? Let me just start saying, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Robert Smith, Vice Chair of the Arts Commission and Chair of the Subcommittee on Art in Public Spaces. And this is Chris Trelle, a fellow commissioner and also on the Subcommittee on Art in Public Spaces. Robyn Grant, our chair, is not able to be with us today due to travel plans. So we're going to share this presentation with you.
It's not loaded on the machine.
Okay. We brought extra copies. Does everybody have a copy? So you're okay with that? All right.
And you have it in color?
Yes. In color, okay.
Makes a difference.
What we're here to talk about today is a document that you have in front of us. And this document reflects work we've been doing for the past year in looking at public arts programs in surrounding communities here in Orange County, but also in cities as far away as Seattle and San Diego and Scottsdale and Palm Desert and even Chicago. To see what kind of programs different cities have and which ones might be applicable and appropriate for what we're trying to do over at the New Civic Center Park. There's a wonderful opportunity there. We've had a chance to meet with Peter Walker Partners. And they have laid down a base plan that provides locations for as many as forty pieces of sculpture in the park. And the real question, of course, is how do we acquire sculpture to go there and curate it? And we were looking at different programs that we thought could be viable, wanted to present them to you and then get some feedback from you on your thoughts on that. So the first two that we're going to present, I'm going to ask Chris to do that. And these are programs that we found in San Diego, thanks to Councilman Webb, and also one in Palm Desert, that are designed to be temporary, but have had a great deal of success. And I'll ask Chris to talk about those two programs. And then we'll talk about some other programs that are designed to end up with art permanently placed in the park and art of some importance and significance. So Chris, if you want to share your experience with these two programs?
Absolutely. The first model that we explored was the Port of San Diego's Public Art Program called Urban Trees. It's now in its sixth incarnation. And as you can see from the photos, it is urban trees. They provide the artist with a concrete base and a pole. And then it's up to the artist to then design a whimsical artistic tree that will go in one of those holders all along the port in San Diego, which obviously is right in San Diego Bay. The artists submit designs, thirty are commissioned to create the urban trees. It's a juried competition. And they loan their artwork to the port for twelve months, at the end of which they get the artwork back. They can have the artwork available for sale during the time that it's at the port on display. And the port has the first right of refusal if they wish to purchase the artwork. And the costs that are associated with this program, in addition to a twenty-five-hundred-dollar honorarium for each artist, would be costs of the concrete planters, which remain in place for each subsequent urban trees project, and then ongoing administrative costs. And coincidentally, I was there when they were doing a shift over from one urban trees project to another, so there were only a few trees there. But I did go down and observe that. And it's really interesting to see the different types of trees and expressions of artwork that these artists have created all along the bay. And to watch the visitors looking at these works of art. And also noticed when I went to UCSD, which Robert will talk about in a little while, some of these trees were actually from other exhibits purchased and are on display on the campus of UCSD. Also took a trip out to Palm Desert to look at the El Paso Invitational Sculpture Exhibition, which is now on display through October of two thousand and ten. It's a two-year exhibition. And it's on, most of it is on a mile-long area called the El Paso Shopping District. Parts of the exhibit are also on adjoining streets. But most of it's down one central area, and most of the pieces of artwork are along the center median. As you can see from the photos in here, there is a variety of different styles of art, but they're all placed within the center median in these concrete platforms, I guess you could call them. And again, like San Diego, there's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar honorarium provided for each artist and artwork. And the artist's responsible for delivery and pickup of the artwork. And again, it's a curated exhibit with different costs associated for curator, public relations, installation, et cetera. And Robert, I'll let you talk about UCSD.
The two programs that Chris just talked about, we think both of them could have viability here in our city and deserve some more exploration, but would seek maybe some guidance from the council today and toward one or the other of those, or maybe some further research. The other things we were looking at on page six is wanting to be able to have some important art in the Civic Center, significant art. art in the Civic Center, significant art. And one of the models that I felt had done a good job of this has been operating since the mid-'80s at the University of California, San Diego, and a generous donor there funded that for a million and a half dollars in the mid-'80s. There's an executive director lady named Mary Beebe, and it's an ongoing foundation. It has membership at $500 a year, and the members go on field trips and look at the new proposals they have for art. But they have an advisory panel of prominent artists and museum curators, and they continually fundraise for additional piece, pieces of art. We just presented you with three of them here that are on the campus. They have about a dozen and a half spread around the campus. The foundation will contract with an artist, raise the funds to do it. The chancellor of the UC San Diego campus does have a veto over what they're doing. They present the pieces and where they think they would go on the campus, and assuming the chancellor concurs, they then raise the funds to have the pieces individually fabricated and installed. The campus does do the maintenance of the pieces, and right now, it's about $30,000 a year to maintain these sculptures. And it's a very wide variety of pieces. The most recent one they've got is there on the left, and it's a giant teddy bear made out of mammoth boulders. And I was surprised when I saw this. It was right in front of one of their very high-tech engineering buildings, so it was quite a contrast. But a young father and his daughter were there, and they asked if I'd take their picture with it, and people were having a great deal of fun with it. And then another one way over to the far right, which is kind of interesting. This is a snake that makes its way up the hill. Their library sets up on a tall knoll, and you literally walk over the top of this snake, and this is by an LA artist, Alexis Smith. So they had a wide variety of art there. All of it seemed to be getting a lot of attention and providing enjoyment. And this may be a model for us to look at for a long term, and also to make sure that we can raise significant monies to have important art there. So each of these pieces are raised individually, funding for them, and vary in cost. The large teddy bear you're looking at there now was about $800,000, so some of this gets to be fairly pricey. The next page is another option I think might be helpful to us, particularly in making sure we have some art in the park when the City Hall opens. We've had several very fruitful meetings with the Sculpture Foundation. They are, corporate offices are in Santa Monica. Their executive director, Paula Stokely, has come down and had lunch with Robyn Grant and myself. They operate a 35-acre sculpture park in New Jersey, about an hour and a half out of Manhattan, and represent over 150 sculptors. And one of their missions is to promote sculpture around the country. So they've worked with cities like Chicago and Tampa, Florida, loaning sculpture on six- to nine-month basis. And they've expressed a strong interest in seeing about working with us, on loaning us some sculpture. And in the initial conversations we've had with them, they've been talking only about move-in and move-out fees. We were looking at one piece that might go in the library lobby for a while. It's a cast bronze that's life-size, but of a guy sitting in an overstuffed chair. He's asleep with his spectacles on his head and a book there, and it's painted bronze. And so we thought it might be interesting, presented to the Library Foundation, and they were prepared to loan that piece for a total of $3,000, which would cover them moving it here and removing the piece. So we'd like to explore that a little bit more and look at the possibilities. We also have talked to a couple of other museums and institutions locally that have expressed some interest in loaning sculpture. Many museums have pieces that they cannot display themselves. They're being warehoused, so I think there is some opportunity to be able to borrow pieces, important pieces, that could be in the park for some period of time. One of the things I like about the temporary programs that Chris talked about, or the loan, is it means there's something always fresh there in the park for people to see. And one of my experiences in serving on the Discovery Science Center Board is sometimes people come and see what's there and don't come back because they think nothing changes. And I think if we can have some things that change, we'll encourage people to want to come back and use the park more. So this would be another way of accomplishing that. On page eight is one that's a little bit outside of the pure art thing, but I wanted to present it because I found it intriguing. This is at the Morton Arboretum, which is located outside of Chicago on about 1,700 acres. So it's a large arboretum. But we were there in the fall, and what they had done, and what you're looking at here, are scarecrows that Girl Scouts had made, and they had probably 100 of them along the pathways as you walked through there. And people were having a ball with them. A number of these could actually move, the arms could move, or they could do things. And so they were doing programs where they were programming their space for the seasons of the year or for special events and things. And again, it isn't that these would stay permanently at all, but I think it could be kind of interesting. And we were thinking that some kind of collaboration, maybe with the Parks and Recs and with the Library Foundation, might give us some more ideas for these kinds of things that could also be in the park and have an art aspect to them, but be temporary and be something maybe created by the citizens of Newport Beach. I'm going to ask Chris to come back up and talk a little bit about some of the cities that surround us and are here in Orange County, and a number of them do have significant public arts programs. Many of you may be aware of them, so we'll just take a minute and then kind of bring this to a conclusion and see what questions or what directions you might have for us.
Well, after going outside the county, we thought, "What have other cities in Orange County done in the way of public art?" And not surprisingly, a number of cities do have public art programs of varying degrees. And we chose four just as examples of what they do and how they work, and we have culled pages of information down into one simple paragraph. But just in essence, Brea, which has been receiving a number of awards for their public art program, is funded by developers who are responsible for selecting the artists, commissioning artwork, maintaining the artwork, and the sculptors are privately owned. Laguna Beach Art in Public Places Program is also similarly funded by developers. Fullerton's public art program is overseen by the city's Public Art Committee, which is comprised of representatives from Fortun Museum Center Redevelopment Committees and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And one important distinction with Fullerton is most of their public art are murals and paintings that are in different parts of the city. Anaheim also has an Art in Public Places project that was, again, funded through a public and private percent-for-art partnership. And the total cost, which was less than half a million dollars, was shared equally by the major participants in the downtown development and includes no money from the city's general fund. Now, the methods of funding from these examples and most of the other ones we looked at for different cities included developer fees, bed tax, and the city's sales tax. And one other important distinction I wanted to make between most of these cities and what Newport Beach is doing is these are spread out throughout the city. So most of these, you can do a walking tour of downtown Anaheim's areas. Most of these you would have to drive to. I think Newport Beach has a fascinating opportunity because it's in a really nicely-contained area, and it's something that no other city in Orange County really does. So I think that distinction is very important. And as you can see, the summary page, I'll just go down it briefly, most of the models that we reviewed had an advisory panel that were comprised of local art experts. This panel helped develop criteria and methods of acquisition of art. Most of the models reviewed had some sort of funding mechanism, either from development fees, taxes, or private foundations and donors. And just wanted to remind you that there are areas in the park and in the Civic Center that have been identified by the designers and reserved for artwork of various sizes, so a variety of these types of artwork could be put in different parts of the park. Also, any public art program needs the active involvement and commitment from both the city council and civic-minded citizens to be successful. And other issues that need to be considered regarding any public art program would be security, maintenance, general administration costs, insurance, curator fees, and things of that nature. Robert, I'll let you follow up with the recommendations.
We have what I'm going to call, these are tentative recommendations, ones that, based on our research, we think deserve some further exploration. And one of the things that has been enjoyable about doing this whole process is seeing the variety of ways that different cities have fulfilled the needs of their cities in terms of providing significant art in public spaces. One of the first things we're recommending is the city already does have a collection of art. It's largely two-dimensional, not three-dimensional. But in talking to our staff member, Jana, it really has never been catalogued. And so we're going to suggest that we should undertake cataloging it so that the architects will know what's available within the city. Particularly, this might go in the actual building itself, so this is something we'd like to undertake. Another thing that may be worth looking into some more is doing more of a feasibility study, looking at resources and options that would be appropriate for our Civic Center. I met yesterday with Karen Moss, who is the chief curator at Orange County Museum of Art, and she teaches in USC's Graduate Degree Program in Public Art, which is a unique program in the country. And she felt there might be some opportunity for us to do something with their graduate students and staff up there in the way of looking at some of these options and further developing them. So that's something we'll look into a little bit more and maybe report back later on. We also looked at some of the models our own city has used, the McFadden model, which successfully was able to put an important piece of art down there at the pier, and we think having, you know, a website up and operating may be important. Another thing that we should have this coming year are several lectures by prominent artists and art curators. The Arts Commission last year, on behalf of the city, made some grants to the Library Foundation and Orange County Museum of Art. So they are currently working on selecting artists that would come and talk about the whole process of art in public spaces, how it's done, what the challenges are, what the benefits are. And we think this may be a way of raising consciousness and getting people more interested in and aware of the benefits. Again, I think something like the temporary programs that we saw in San Diego or Palm Desert could be very fruitful, enabling us to have some very nice art in place by the time the City Hall were to open. I think also we'd like to explore more a separate sculpture foundation that either an individual might fund or a group of individuals that would allow us to have at least one very significant piece of art there in the Civic Center Park when the City Hall opens. Our city also does have a very well-defined policy for donation of art, and maybe we need to be a little more proactive in maybe trying to locate people who would like to donate art to the city. But that policy is there and has been utilized in the past. Also, I think there's some really interesting opportunities for programming that could involve the whole community and involve different commissions working together, and we'd like to, at some point, explore that a little bit further. And also would like to continue working with Peter Walker Partners. I think they've done a very good job of laying down a base plan, and we'd like to see if there's some other ideas that might be applicable. So this is the work we've done so far. We're pleased to take the time to present it to you. If you have any questions or directions, we'd be glad to do our best to answer them.
Counselor Webb?
Well, I think that you've done just a wonderful job of giving us a great array of directions we need to go. I think that I agree with you that this is an opportunity that we have right now to do some planning, to get started, and have something on the ground when we open. And I think that you have listed a very good set of recommendations, which maybe could be turned into goals.
Yeah.
And go forward. I personally feel that, I know that we're tight on money everywhere, but that we should really consider trying to put together some sort of initial seed money after you guys have investigated and tried to figure out if there are any donors that might be available. I think that I agree with you that something like the San Diego program with the trees, that kind of really fascinated me when I saw it. And because of our park is so long and linear, it's the type of thing that could potentially fit in there. But for instance, if we were to adopt a temporary program like that, do you have any ideas on what a theme might possibly be?
You know, we haven't gone that far with it. I think that would be a very good thing to look at, whether we kind of emulate urban trees, because we do have a park and that, or whether it's something else. I think that deserves more exploration, but I'm sure something interesting could be devised.
I would like to compliment you. I think you've done a great job, and I guess the tough part now is, how do we actually get some, we got the skeleton, let's get some meat on it now.
Mr. Jim Curry?
Well, I also, Bob, would like to commend you and the Arts Commission for, I think, a great job. I was really impressed, frankly, by the way that some of these cities were able to put together some impressive pieces of art and do it on a relatively low-cost basis. And I'm also convinced that if we were to pursue this in our community, we'd be able to attract a lot of civic-minded people who'd want to participate financially, who would help make this a success. And I echo Counselor Member Webb's sentiment that, you know, we as a city ought to be helpful and encouraging in that, and at the appropriate time, provide some seed money. But to your recommendations, my response is all of the above. Let's push forward on all of these initiatives. Let's come up with a specific plan that's right for Newport, given these various concepts. And I'm very pleased with the linkages and the contacts that you've made with these organizations across the country, because I think to the extent that a circuit of major art that's traveling around the country develops, we certainly want to be part of that. You know, public art is one of those public value kinds of things that defines one city versus another. It defines a city as a place to live and adds to the value and the sense of ambiance of that community. And so I think that's an important step for us, and I encourage you to continue in this regard.
Thank you. Jordan?
I would agree, except in one respect. I would like to see us be supportive in developing artists in what we do. And so to be borrowing art from some place in New Jersey, that's fine, but I would rather see us, if we're going to do it, we have a wonderful, very important art area in Southern California. I'm not talking just about Newport Beach, but in Southern California. And to do programs where we encourage them, as many museums do, to participate in San Diego trees, but it could be a different theme every other year or something. But anything we can do to support the artist as well, I think, is very important.
Thank you. We probably should have made more point of that. We agree with you completely on that, and that certainly can be part of this. And in fact, some of the ones we've mentioned here do have that component, but I know we agree with you completely on that.
Counselor woman Deagle?
Yes, when you were appointed to the Arts Commission, it was pretty obvious you were a go-getter, so you spent a lot of time and energy on this, and clearly, art is your passion. So thanks for looking into all this, and I can support the recommendations that you've laid out. And it sounds like you probably have a pretty good rolodex to get all that art, too.
Well, I want you to know, the whole Arts Commission, we did a two-hour study session with all of our commissioners, so this isn't just my work or Chris's, but the whole commission is very excited about. I think this is one of the really unique opportunities that's going to be presented, and we're very excited about what's going to happen with that park and City Hall. So a lot of enthusiasm. I think a lot of our other fellow citizens, civic-minded citizens are going to get very excited about this, too, when they start to see the real reality of it. It's always a little challenge when it's still on pieces of paper, but I'm convinced there's going to be a number of people who will want to be part of this.
I think the other aspect of it is, is the Seattle park.
Yes, the Olympic Sculpture Park.
But again, a linear park, and it's become a real attraction. And so there's always another payoff, too. You have the aesthetic, but you might have some economic benefit to this one.
Yeah, absolutely. They've had tremendous success up there.
Counselor Henn?
Yeah, so I think we have a very good opportunity here, and that we know we've got a target date that we're shooting for, don't we?
Yeah.
For the opening of the New City Hall. And so we, it would be just great that your multi-pronged program here would include a significant unveiling at the point that we open City Hall of an owned piece of art for the city. But I'm particularly interested in funding mechanisms here, your recommendations for a long-range funding mechanism that would continue the city's ability to add permanent owned pieces of art as time goes by. And then perhaps a different funding mechanism that would be aimed at these shorter-term, revolving kind of exhibit arrangements. And so that's where the rubber will really meet the road on this in terms of, you know, so I look very much look forward to your recommendations on those points.
Well, we agree with you completely, and I know you'll find a lot of passion, enthusiasm, commitment from our side, but we're going to be visiting you guys some more in the future, anyway, too, because to make something like this work really will require the active commitment of council on these things. on these things, because there are donors who really want to hear from council members and things, that this is something the city is really committed to doing, and that, too. But we're going to continue the spade work in developing these options more fully, so that hopefully we can report back to you at a later point in time.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess that too many times we have these great projects that don't have any time schedules attached to them, and they kind of just drift forever. I think that we ought to try to set some sort of goal of perhaps trying to have a program more adequately defined, say, within a year, which would allow us six to nine, wait, how long before we move into New City Hall?
June of 2012.
Okay, so that a year puts us, at any rate, that allows us almost a year or two, or a year and a half for implementation, to go out and get the money. So that would be something for you to shoot for, I think.
Councilman Rosansky?
I'll just be the first to donate the blue sculpture at Superior and Coast Highway.
Oh, no.
I...
That's a district, that's a district, too, sculpture. I'm sorry.
I hope you guys will step up with your districts, too, and find art.
Well, that's the one thing that I...
Just laying around.
That I hope you also address, because I know art in public places is always, I hope we won't be so timid that it's always boring, but I know that we probably don't want Robert Maplethorpe either.
No.
Because of the controversies.
As I think Chris said, I think one of the things, and this may be one of the things we'll do as we move on further, we have some tremendous talent in our own county at UCI, Cal State Fullerton, Chapman, Orange County Museum of Art, and other institutions. And I think one of the things we're looking at is having an advisory panel of established artists and established curators. That seems to be one of the most appropriate ways to make sure that the art, art is significant, that it's an important piece of art, but it works with the community it's going into. So I think that's one of the things we're going to continue to try to develop some names and things, and then look at how we might structure something like that.
Okay. Well, I think the recommendations are good. You know, we've really got a great opportunity here with the park in the City Hall to really do something. The architects, landscape architects, have identified these opportunity sites. And I think what I'd personally like to see is, kind of like on Councilman Webb's lines, that within a relatively short period of time, you develop a more specific program with some dates on it. I kind of see it being a combination of just about everything that you have here in order to have some significant sculptures out there at the time the City Hall opens. I mean, that should be your goal, is to, what kind of a program can you put together to have some pieces, whether they're city-owned pieces, loan pieces, coming from New Jersey or locally or whatever, probably a combination of all of that, so that we have something out there that really complements the City Hall and the park. And in the long run, having the sculpture garden or path, whatever we end up calling it, is really going to help make that park a much more visited, much more usable park. Just adds to all the other things we're trying to do out there.
We'll be glad to work to that end and report back at some point next year, you know, probably sooner than later, because, you know, time, it's funny how it runs by. But fortunately, we are at a place where we do have some time to bring some of these things to fruition, I believe.
Councilman Hinn?
My guess is you don't have as much time as you think you might. You know, if you take your end date, which is the opening of City Hall, and work backwards in a timeline, I think you're going to find that you're going to need to move ahead pretty rapidly here, actually, to get the planning in place for this. So I encourage you to do that, and I'm very supportive of your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Robert.
Yes, thank you.
Chris. Good presentation. Okay, well, we'll take public comments on this, and we've actually got another part to this item on the agenda. Does anyone want to comment on the Arts Commission presentation? Okay, Mr. Kiff?
Thank you, Mayor Solich. And I'm begging the council's indulgence on this and tying Library Director Cynthia Cowell's comments, and I think she'll come up in just a moment, because Cynthia has an appointment later tonight, and I also didn't want to keep her until late in the evening. She's actually technically on vacation. But I know one of the issues that's of interest to you is the use of the community room. And my stretch tag to this is that I think in that memo that Cynthia and I prepared for you, there is a tie to art, to the community room, such as programs that would be provided in the community room about art, and then maybe a presentation that's going on. Councilmember Gardner's smiling. I think it's a stretch.
Does the city attorney want to comment on this?
No, I don't think he does.
He blessed this approach this morning.
And they've asked me about this, and I'm okay with this. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner.
And I think Mr. Hunt's admonishment was, well, let's just replicate Cynthia's comments tonight, either verbally. But, I don't know, Cynthia, if you wouldn't mind coming on up. There she is. So the council, just as quick background for the council, Cynthia and I prepared a memo that went out to you later yesterday, which explained some of the things that could be used, done in that new community room, the larger size, the smaller size. And you also have a letter from the Library Foundation, which talks about their expectations for potentially increasing things, such as attendance at the DSLS series. And then I also attached a schedule that shows the way the existing Friends Room is used, as well as some things that the Foundation does, a history of the kinds of things that they do right now, including their book discussion groups, as well as, they have an event coming up just this Saturday, and you can see where they cap it at 200 people, saying that basically it's first come, first served with that attendance. So with that, maybe, Cynthia and I haven't prepared this too well, so if you might have some comments, Cynthia, about, I think the key point you've made to me and to the Building Committee was if they build it, they will come, if we build it, they will come. So maybe to tag off that.
Well, first of all, it's very easy to tie this to the Arts Commission, because they typically, in the spring, have an artist, a juried artist show. And last year, it was so full with people and pieces of beautiful art, that I was really concerned if the fire marshal came, he would shut the event down. It was that crowded. I mean, it was packed. And this is just one of the events that we have in the community room that draws a huge crowd. It was on a Sunday afternoon. And, you know, these are the kinds of things that a larger space could be easily adapted to. Basically, my concern is that I know how heavily used the Friends Room is at the current library. And having to turn away happy little children who've come to see a performance for summer reading program, and having to deal with their mothers, who are also really happy with the prospect that their children are going to see a quality program, and having to be told, I'm sorry, but we can only limit this to 200 people, and that's adults and children combined. So we have problems with the size of the room on occasion. It's not every time we have an event. I don't want you to be misled in that regard. However, it is often enough that it is of great concern to me, as a person who wants people to come to the library and use the facility. On the other hand, DSLS and the Foundation are, both organizations are things with which you both, you all have common knowledge. Many of you attend the DSLS lectures and know that they're very well-attended, and the tickets sell out, almost without fail. They're sellout events. And the Foundation's position on all of this, and if I may paraphrase their letter, is that if they had more room, they could sell more tickets, and they could give more money to the library. And that's pretty much their position, in just knowing that we need a larger space for those events. Because, as I said, we are limited, and we do adhere to that, because I'm not going to be involved with getting too many people in that room and creating any hazards for public safety. So essentially, we have free lectures, we have for-pay lectures, we have children's programs, we have all kinds of things going on in that room that are important to this community. We have a community that likes the kinds of things we do there, and they would like to see more. We routinely have to turn away not-for-profit people or customers, because we have a policy that states we only allow not-for-profit organizations, rather, we have to turn away for-profit organizations. We don't rent the room out, because it is just, it's contrary to library trustee policy. We have made a very few rare exceptions to that, and it has always proven to be somewhat difficult for us to do that. The consensus of the library trustees is that if we had another room in close proximity to the library, we could offer more programming on a pay basis, particularly if the room is well-equipped with AV equipment and technology for teaching. We get requests all the time, can we come to the library and use that room to do a seminar? Don't you have satellite downlinks? Can't we do this? Can't we do that? And there, and the answer is generally, well, unless you've got a PowerPoint presentation on a computer, no, you can't. So we know that if we build a room that will accommodate 275 people, the first request we will get will be to accommodate 475. That's been my experience in other jurisdictions where I've worked. We built big rooms that we thought, oh, the community will never fill this up. And the very first event we had was a sellout and waiting room only, and why didn't you build it bigger? So, you know, that is benefit of some experience, some thought, and some encouragement from the Foundation that we push for a larger room than is currently on the drawing boards.
Any questions of Cynthia? Councilman Rosansky?
I did look at the memo that you sent with the calendar, and not to be contrary or anything, but it did seem like there was a lot of open dates on that calendar, especially on the weekends. I mean, there were some months where it wasn't even being used at all on Saturdays and Sundays, and a lot of days during the week. I mean, is it just everybody wants certain days, and that's just what it is? Or, I mean, are we...
That is largely the, we don't, we don't put together a lot of library programming on weekends. The Foundation uses it more. Actually, we do have Sunday afternoon music house. We do have programming for children on Saturdays, but it is the exception rather than the rule. We don't program something every weekend in there. Now, if we allowed for-profit companies or organizations to use the room, we could probably rent it every weekend for things like receptions, exhibits, those kinds of things. We could probably do that, but we don't, because of trustee policy.
What's the policy?
That we don't rent to for-profits.
What's the reason, the rationale, again?
There are insurance issues, there are, who gets first come, first served? Do we not use it for library events if somebody is willing to pay us $1,500 a day to use the room? Those kinds of things. It just, it stops the conflict of interest in the use of the room, basically.
Sounds like throwing out the baby with the bathwater to me, but...
It is problematic in that we have scheduling issues. Who stays, keeps the building open? How much do we charge for that? We have not set a fee schedule for that, and that is by design.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Hinn?
Yeah, so I looked at the schedule, too, and I actually did a rough calculation that about two-thirds of the days were used for something, for a portion of the day. And it looked to me like, overall, your programmable time was roughly 30%, 40% used. Just real rough and tough, excluding the days that you were closed and so forth. And so that's still a lot of use, and very good use. My concern is, though, that we're, to add the community room in the Civic Center, we're more than doubling, it's not one in replacement of another, we're more than doubling the availability of programming space and time. And so that's what gives me some pause, you know. On the issue of renting it out to for-profit, I think we do need to bear in mind that we don't want to move too far in the direction of being in competition with the local hotels, restaurants, and other people that have display space that, you know, are in business. And I don't think we want the city to be competing against, in effect, in any sort of a significant way, at least, against private industry for the rental of this space. And that's sort of putting us at odds with our constituency to some extent. So we need to think through that line as well.
Well, the intent here is that there are many smaller organizations, homeowners associations, for instance, and ballet companies, and you name it, the gamut of hobbyists, for instance, who can't afford hotel space, or their events don't warrant a rental of that large a space, or, you know, whatever the reasons may be, economic or otherwise, there's just no space for them, and this would be ideal, if it's programmed properly and the policies are in place for its use.
Which I would agree with, but when you cross the line into for-profit, it's not so much not-for-profit, for-profit, it's the type of use that would otherwise be going to another venue, I guess, paying to use another venue in the city for whatever they do. And so, yeah.
Councilwoman Diggle?
I would agree with that concern, as far as using tax dollars to construct facilities that in turn compete against our businesses. I would share that concern. And it seems as if the perspective of the trustees is to limit the use. And so a concern that I would have is the tax dollars are being used to construct an even larger facility, yet there seems to be a lot of limitations on the use of that facility. And so how that gets worked out, I would have concerns about.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I just have one. Have you had a chance to take a look at that sketch the architects did on the combined room?
Yes, I have.
Did you have any thoughts on that? Because it showed kind of a much larger theater-type seating arrangement as we have here, as opposed to a more flexible, open room. And I just wonder if you had any thoughts on one design versus another?
Mayor, my understanding of that room is that the space is designed for maximum flexibility, as opposed to fixed seating or things that would be anchored or not easily moved. So my encouragement all along to the architects has been, make it as flexible as possible, no matter what size it is, make it so that it can be adapted to almost any use. So I have had lots of comments and concerns shared with the architects.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, I looked at the sketch, too, because we all received it. And personally, I did, other than a lecture, I don't know how that would, space would work into what type of a program you're looking for. And basically, you're looking at a big room like this, with a bunch of seats further back, maybe we could have some fancy AV equipment and things like that in there. But it really just would, it wouldn't address a lot of the types of events that you would perceive to be held in a place like that. Is that accurate?
Well, any space that's equipped properly with, for instance, the, not necessarily extremely expensive AV equipment, but rather just appropriately installed with good sound and projection capabilities, would make that room extremely heavily used, even for city training and those sorts of things. Where, as, right now, we don't have that capability. We don't have satellite downlink, we don't have that kind of thing that would enable us to do really some very formal training that may or may not be used.
Maybe you're not understanding. I'm saying that for the types of programming that you would want to have, considering that whole entire list, a fixed seating type of an arrangement would probably not be an optimal choice for you.
That's correct. I apologize for misunderstanding.
No, that's fine. So, because I looked at, as I said, if you're having a lecture, maybe a teaching thing or something, that might work, because everybody's there, but it doesn't allow, for instance, some type of table seating. Or you talked about a chef program, I think, well, can't really be cooking in the city council chamber, I don't think. And, you know, some other types of programs that would probably, you know, plays or ballet, I mean, where would you do that, unless you had some type of a stage environment? So I just don't see the two really coexisting in the same space. This is my opinion.
Councilman Gardner?
One suggestion has been that we do more with the Friends Room, that there are things that we could do to enlarge it, to give it, provide more seating. Certainly, I would think we could upgrade a lot of the services. And we talk about a good sound system and that sort of thing. The acoustics aren't very good in there, but we could provide the technology. There's no reason why we couldn't upgrade that and make it more useful, perhaps.
And more comfortable chairs.
Oh, God, those chairs are awful, aren't they?
That is the number one complaint.
They are awful. I'll second that motion.
Okay. I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you very much, Cynthia.
So I guess we're going to discuss this more... So, I guess we're going to discuss this more at the building committee level, or...
Well, I think tonight on the council...
Or tonight, okay.
We'll have a more full discussion. Purpose was for Cynthia just to give us her perspective up close and personal here this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to comment on the library's report on the proposed use of the Civic Center community room?
Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, I don't want Brian to have to sit here. Brian, we flip-flop the order. So, we've done our presentation, but I did want to acknowledge Brian Jeanette. He was part of the Green Task Force, and he did the guidelines. And although you have what is about a tenth of it was attached so we could save trees, but it's a very exhaustive but very useful tool for the city. So, I just wanted to acknowledge his efforts as well as the other members of the task force. Thank you, Brian.
Well, Brian does a lot of work for the city. He's involved in the zoning code committee and really has a lot of civic involvement and really happy to have it, Brian. Provide a lot of expertise to it. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, consideration of updates for the municipal code to enhance the city's code enforcement abilities.
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of penalty provisions sprinkled throughout the municipal code without consistency to them, and we think that it would help our efficiency in enforcing the codes if those were made more uniform. In addition, we have not updated the fines that are associated with administrative citations since we first instituted the citation system back in 1997. And we have updated some fees for services and permit issuance, so we're now to the point where in some cases, the fine for some activity will be lower than the cost of getting the permit. So, we don't really incentivize people to obtain the permit that we want them to have. And in some cases, we're finding that the fine amounts just don't seem to be attracting the attention of the property owner and getting the issue resolved. So, then we need to turn more of these cases over to the office of the city attorney, which means that we're spending more city resources on gaining compliance with the codes. So, we are here today to ascertain the council's interest in having us update these sections of the code. And Kyle Rowan from the office of the city attorney is here to give you a more detailed presentation. And we also have a number of staff members who can help with questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Also present here is Chief Lumen, Captain Johnson with the Patrol Division Commander, Captain Kaminsky, Detective Division Commander, John Kapler, Code Enforcement Division Manager, and Matt Cozyline, Senior Code Enforcement Officer, and Jay Albatard, the Building Official for the city. I had spoken with Glenn Everrode. He does support this approach, but I don't see him here right now. And I think those departments represent the vast majority of departments in the city that do issue administrative citations. I see this as two parts. One is our uniform penalties, and under the government code, the city can attach to any violation of the municipal code criminal penalties to it, that being as a misdemeanor level or an infraction level, the lowest level of criminal penalties. If the council chooses to adopt a uniform approach to penalties for municipal code violations, at a misdemeanor level, you could then raise your administrative fine levels up to the maximum of $1,000 that the council could set for a violation of municipal code for an administrative citation. That's the only way that the criminal penalties tie into the administrative citations. If you issue an administrative citation, it does not go down on a person's criminal record. They do not have a criminal history. It is just a fine amount, and the punishment level, whether it's an infraction or a misdemeanor, only dictates the maximum fine amount that the city can assess. The government code mandates that if it's classified as an infraction, for a first violation within 12 months, it's a $100 fine. A second violation within 12 months of that first violation, you can go up to $200. And for a third violation, it's $1,000, and that's our current penalty scheme for administrative citations. However, if the violation is deemed a misdemeanor and can be subject to prosecution as a misdemeanor, the council can increase the maximum fine amounts for an administrative citation up to $1,000. And there is no scaling provisions in the government code for a misdemeanor violation if it's under administrative citation. However, city staff believes that a scaling provision is warranted in this context, and with the council's guidance on maybe any fine levels that they may like to see should the council choose to proceed down this path.
Could you explain how, under the present system, that there can be, every day that you're in violation, that there can be, you know, a dollar amount that's assessed on a daily basis? Because under the existing system, fines, I believe, can amount up to a substantial amount of money rather quickly, can't they?
They can, and that would be in the context of mainly building or zoning code violations is traditionally where somebody either did construction without permits, or we have multiple dwelling units in R1 or R2 zone, and there are three or four dwelling units. On those situations, every day that the violation occurs, at 12:00 midnight occurs a new violation, and the law allows the city to put that in place, because otherwise, it's not like, before I came here to work for the city, I was a DA, and so I dealt with other crimes. So, it's not like a robbery where someone goes in and robs a store, and they're done with the crime, and the crime's over. The crime occurs each and every day, and it's a repeated violation, so the law has deemed that at the start of the new day, it becomes a new violation. However, as Assistant City Manager Wood pointed out, some businesses and establishments don't operate that way. Bars and restaurants that have use permits, their violations are only when they're operating in that fashion. Noise complaints and violations of the city's noise ordinance are only when the noise or decimal level reaches a certain level. If it's turned down, it's not always at that level. If they're violating their use permit for the, they're having live entertainment where they're prohibited, or things like that, or they've changed the structure or character of the eating and drinking establishment to that of a nightclub, it's only when they are, in fact, doing that activity there that they are in violation. And so, those will be the nuanced distinctions where you have different violations and where we do expend significant city resources to investigate these violations. And we frankly had owners and operators tell us that we'll pay your $100 citation, your $200, and your $500 citation because we make X number of dollars greater than that by violating the city's use permit or ordinance, whether it be noise or permit regulations. One specific example is the film permit in the city costs $260. We catch someone filming in the city, it's a $100 administrative citation that's issued. These film companies have, I've been told, I haven't had this experience firsthand, but I've been told, has said, we'll take our chance and not get the permit. If we're caught, we pay the $100, and we still come out ahead by $160. So, there is some incentive for them to just take a gamble, and that's why we feel that there is a need for this and would seek council's direction. I'd be happy to answer any other specific questions or comments that you have. I realize you were running over a little bit, so I don't want to...
Okay. Councilwoman Deagle?
Yes, when we were talking about the significant outlay of tax dollars and costs and fines and efficiencies and just the introduction of the departments, I mean, this has got to be a multimillion-dollar operation in terms of all the costs in code enforcement, city attorney. We have building inspectors. We have a police officer in ABC. We have a code enforcement division and so on. And what cost-benefit analysis have we been doing? For example, a concern that I have is we spend $20,000 to go after somebody, and they never comply. So, what results are we getting? Lot of costs being spent. Is there some information available on the nature of the violations and what the results are that we're getting, and just the overall magnitude of code enforcement?
Mr. Rowan has attempted to address, pull together some of the information addressing those issues for you, council member, in a memorandum that we supplied to council. But allow me for a moment to address some of that.
Sure.
First of all, this is an effort or suggestion by staff in order to be more cost-effective. And the way we see it is, is that if we can obtain compliance earlier without the further investment of either code enforcement officers, repeated visits to the site, or having a matter come to the office of the city attorney and incurring that expense, whether it's through the use of Mr. Rowan's Christie Parkers in my time, or what we did in the past of handing out those cases to outside council, which we aren't currently doing. With respect to the actual cost efficiency, the memorandum, I think Mr. Rowan could address that more directly. I think it warrants an appropriate analysis of cost efficiency. It absolutely does. I don't believe we're spending quite $20,000 on individual citations and stuff, but I think we have not been able to pull all of the information together. And I'd love to bring further information back to you on that, particularly as we look at how things should progress in the budget. But, Mr. Rowan, could you address some of that?
Yes, thank you. As you can see, the city issued over 2,200 administrative citations last year. Of those 2,200, some of them are repeat violations. Traditionally, Captain Johnson may be able to address this better than I, but I do not believe that the police department citations reach that second or third level, because I believe that the majority of their citations are either for being in a public park or on the beach after hours, possession of an open container, or urinating or defecating the public, maybe trash picking or things like that, quality of life issues that affect our residents. And I don't think that the police department escalates fine levels, because I don't believe that they encounter as many of the same violators. As to revenue in building and code enforcement, some of those citations are tiered citations, so you just couldn't do a straight dollar-for-dollar analysis. You'd have to actually look at the citations to see how many have reached that second or third level of enforcement. As for the building department, they have a policy that essentially, they'll go through and they'll issue a notice of violation. After they issue the notice of violation, they may issue a second notice of violation to request compliance. At that point, they'll then issue their first citation if they haven't obtained compliance. Mr. Albatard can address it, but I believe that's about 45, 60 days after that initial inspection. Following that, if they don't hit a compliance deadline and show progress towards the city, i.e. submitting plans, i.e. obtaining the permits, i.e. doing the corrective work that is required, it's a second and third citation. After the fifth citation, so $1,800 in citations, the building department puts together what I'll refer to as a package, their investigative paperwork and their documents and evidence, and submits it to the city attorney's office to take further legal enforcement action. I believe the same is encountered with code enforcement. PD is a separate issue based upon, we find that the majority of their citations are coming out of their patrol division officers. And that's where we see our 74 cases that came in in the last two years to the city attorney's office. I would say that the 74 cases represents an 80-20 rule, where you have 80% of your offenders only eat up 20% of your resources, but that last 20% eats up 80% of your resources. And we've been able to close 26 of these 74 cases with substantial compliance, so success. And that is our goal when we obtain these cases, whether we file criminal charges, whether we go into court to obtain an inspection warrant, whether we record a notice of violation against the property to encumber it, so that any future purchaser takes the property on notice of the violation, the conditions that we're complaining of. Because I found that people will put it in the name of another LLC, transfer it to a brother or sister, and then we start the whole process over again because they're claiming they didn't have notice of the violation. So, if we ever get word that we think they may be trying to pull one of those on us, we record a notice of violation. And in those cases, we traditionally get compliance a lot quicker, because we also send notices to their mortgage holder. And there is a provision in, I would say, just about every mortgage, but I can't speak for sure on that, that talks about it going to waste or if they're violating any law or using the property in a way that demeans the value of it, which are allowing it to exist as a nuisance, demeans the property's value. And the mortgage holders, a lot of times, will come down on the property owners and assist us in obtaining compliance. So, we do have a variety of means, short of criminal enforcement and short of just issuing administrative citations, but we believe that the cost-benefit analysis, as City Attorney Hunt said, if the fines were at a higher level for some of these violations, they would not have the cost-benefit analysis, and they'd be able to come into compliance sooner and quicker with our municipal code.
Okay, appreciate some analysis. We'll be forthcoming on that. And then I had a couple of other questions. The state apparently allows for a cost recovery if we prevail. Do we have an ordinance that addresses that?
I believe the city council, before I started the city on August 17th, so I believe before I started here, the city council did adopt a new ordinance for the cost recovery of attorney's fees. However, the cost recovery of attorney's fees on any administrative citation or complaint that the city would file, whether it be civil or criminal, can only kick in if the city elects at the initiation of that lawsuit, or the initiation of issuing the administrative citation, to seek the recovery of attorney's fees. The vast majority of our administrative citations never come to us. The flip side and the catch to that is that if we invoke that clause and we're unsuccessful, we pay their attorney's fees. So, it's a cost benefit. Other cities that I have provided services for prior to coming here to Newport Beach had adopted a policy that if that was to be implemented in the city, was to try to seek cost recovery, that it had to be approved by the city attorney first, because the fear was that code enforcement officers could check a box or whatever on a citation and invoke that provision and not have it been reviewed to see if we had solid evidence against the violator. Not that I could see that problem here, but it's just another preventive measure if we are to seek cost recovery. For a number of our cases where we currently have pending in court, you may be familiar with the Lee Sinlue case, I believe that one we are seeking cost recovery of cost to prosecute that matter civilly.
Okay. And then, and thank you, this is very helpful. And then in terms of when these cases escalate to the city attorney's office, and obviously very competent, get things done, is there some triggers involved, like, you know, I don't want the city attorney out taking photographs and building these cases? I mean, at what level are you engaged? And because the attorney expenses are more expensive, that a lot of the legwork is being done by other resources? And can you respond to that?
Sure. And that's very insightful, and that's certainly the way we look at it. And the way we try to do is utilize the least expensive personnel qualified to perform the task. And so, for example, we have one paralegal, could use two. One paralegal doing a great deal of work in addressing the ongoing factual issues. We utilize code enforcement to do further investigation, and they take the photographs. We don't tend to use our attorneys for investigators. There are times when it's better for an attorney to actually get a firsthand feel for what's going on and go out and take a look at it, but generally speaking, we won't use the attorneys in the actual investigative role. It's not a good use of resources. Where things get particularly expensive are when they go into civil code enforcement predominantly, such as the Lee Sinlue case. That's an expensive matter for us, because it has an ongoing, an ongoing and expensive way of managing through civil discovery, continued trial dates, motions for summary judgment. Valuable and important case, but that's the kind of case that gets the most expensive for us. The second type of case that gets the most expensive would be the types of things like conditional use permit terminations and administrative process. For example, a couple of years ago, when the city was going through the issues and addressing some significant use permit issues related to some bars and lounges, you had two attorneys. We had, I wasn't the city attorney at the time, we had two attorneys that were hired to handle it outside of the office of the city attorney, and that's due to conflict of interest issues. That's extraordinarily expensive process. These are the kinds of things, civil litigation, multiple attorneys used in administrative processes, those kinds of things we're trying to avoid by making it an effective administrative citation process to avoid using the office of the city attorney any more than we need to.
And my final question, thanks for being with me, is that with the ABC officer, we received a state grant, and then apparently that position is no longer being funded by the state and the city. What is funding that position? Is it now a general fund? Is ABC a state function? And, I mean, how did this come about? If you can address that issue. And I believe that you, thank you, brought that to the council's attention.
I would ask Captain Kaminsky if he could address that.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Ms. Deagle. The ABC grant position was funded in July of '08. It ended in July of '09. It was a $100,000 grant. And we use that officer from our burglary section. He was never backfilled. That position was never backfilled. So, while that grant is no longer enforced, we continue to use that one burglary detective in the ABC role, because we feel that that role is very, very important in the city with over 320 liquor licenses. So, we're running one short in the burglary section.
Okay, so what about burglary? Is that not the same priority?
Well, what I've done is I've reorganized the burglary section geographically. We've just expanded areas, and all of our detectives are keeping up with the cases. It hasn't affected the customer service level at all.
Okay, so there wasn't an addition of positions, it was a shift in workload?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I offer just one other thing to maybe put in perspective how much we actually use the office of the city attorney on this? we, we actually use the office of the city attorney on this? In calendar year 2008, and this is just out of the code and water quality enforcement division, not all the departments that, that issue administrative citations, but in 2008 they had 1,871 cases, and so far in 2009, 1,407 cases. So a little over 3,200 cases in that two-year period, which is the same period of time where Mr. Rowan is reporting that 74 cases were referred to the office of the city attorney. So the vast majority of them, we are able to handle in, in the departments and the code enforcement division. It's only the very difficult ones that get referred to the city attorney.
Okay, Counselor Hen.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I presume with all of the law enforcement sitting here that the police department is in favor of these changes that are being recommended here. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is. The chief wants to address it.
As well as code enforcement, so staff is very much in favor of this. I certainly am. And, you know, the purpose here, just to make sure it's clear to the public, the purpose is not to turn our citation process into a profit center for the city. That's, it's, it's in fact exactly the opposite. The purpose here is to provide a deterrent level such that people will choose to comply with what they're supposed to do rather than not. And so we need to have a regime here that makes it a simple, easy decision. Yeah, I think I'm better off to comply. And then for those that still choose to be recalcitrant, the resource is available going up the ladder until we get the compliance. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of straightening out this penalty situation here to make it more uniform. But one question, I, I, two things. There was a reference in here about increasing the fine amounts. Did you intend to exclude the safety enhancement zone from this?
The safety enhancement zone would still be subject to the maximum of a $1,000 fine. We could update it, but that would require, I need to do research into it, and my initial impression is that would require the council to readopt the various findings that allowed the city to establish the safety enhancement zone in the first place.
Well, I know we have a separate...
It could be done, it could be done to increase it, to answer your question directly, but it may just require a little more work to do that. And I know we have discussed issues relative to this with the Fourth of July Safety Committee.
So I know we have a separate process that we're going to go forward. I just don't want to leave that one behind in some respect here. I just want to make sure of that. And then lastly, I, I, it appears to me from what's being recommended that city staff will have more, will be employing more discretion than perhaps in the past, that this is much more of a discretionary approach than you violate this, the penalty is that, you know. I'm okay with that, I have confidence in our city staff, but doesn't that expose us to issues of selective enforcement and discriminatory patterns of enforcement? And how, how does the city attorney feel about that? What, what, what structures do we have in place to protect us against that?
It does give us, it does give staff more discretion. It's, it's within the standard scope of discretion that's utilized by multiple agencies throughout the state of California. It's not like choosing to prosecute a particular violation for one location and not prosecuting for another location. It would be our intention to make sure that in the doc guidelines, there's two appropriate approaches so that we're creating uniformity in our citations based upon levels of, levels of conduct as well as recalcitrants in the conduct. So I don't have a concern based upon our current staffing, but, and certainly we'll keep an eye on it and we'll develop appropriate guidelines in the exercise of that discretion. This is not unusual for jurisdictions in California, so I'm not as concerned about potential selective enforcement issues.
Counselor Rosansky?
Well, picking up on that discretion aspect, and I'm not even sure it's part of this discussion, maybe it's another discussion, but what, the, the big complaints that I get, especially recently, are with enforcement, like, police enforcement with DACS and things like that, where they're going out to people's home and the officers have discretion as to whether to issue them or not issue them. And my sense of it is that we're fairly, we're not as willing to issue them as I think we should be. And, I mean, that's a whole area of code enforcement or enforcement in general that, you know, it doesn't matter what the fine is, if you're not willing to issue the first one, you know, then they go, you know, the first one I think is no fine, or at least with a DAC, and then they go back and then there is a fine, and then eventually the landlord gets ding with, or the property owner gets ding with a fine. But if you're not willing to issue the things, it doesn't, the fine can be $20,000, it doesn't matter, no deterrent. And so I, I guess, to a certain extent, I'd like to see a little bit more, or maybe less discretion, in, in a sense, you know, in that, or a little bit more enforcement, or a little bit less, hey, we'll let this one slide kind of a thing, especially with regard to those disturbing the peace matters and, and resident issues. I'm not so concerned about the building code things and all that, I think that'll work itself out. And a lot of times there are people trying to comply, or it takes time, and this and that. But this is more, you know, hey, we're, you know, party houses and things like that that are just not getting hammered as hard as we, we need to.
I would support those statements.
May I approach him, Curry?
Well, it's somewhat ambiguous what we're being asked to bless here, but I, I would just say generally, I think we need to move forward with this, but we need to do it with some common sense. It doesn't make sense to fine somebody $1,000 to be on the beach late at night, but obviously if people are figuring out that it's cheaper to violate the, the laws and get a ticket than it is to comply with our permitting, then that's a problem that needs to be addressed financially so that we've got rationalization to our fine structure. And in, in terms of cost effectiveness, if there's, if it's, if it's the law, we should enforce it. I mean, we should not, you know, people who live next door to a neighbor who's creating a problem have the right to have the codes enforced irrespective of whether it, it costs us an extra time and a half to send somebody out to do it on a Saturday. I actually had a call about that this Saturday. So that's my comment there. If we have rules that we don't believe are effective or cost effective that should be, should be enforced, they should not be laws, should be taken off the books. But I do support the recommendation to come forward. Again, let's make sure it passes the good sense test.
Well, I guess this is one of those things where the devil's in the details. I, when I initially saw this report, I quite frankly was not in favor of it at all. And I think Kyle made some good examples here of, of situations where maybe there is some adjustment warranted because if you can get away with a $100 fine when you should have had a $260 permit, that doesn't make a lot of sense. But I am concerned about, as Counselor Curry said, about a common sense approach to this and not having situations where, where people get caught up in unintended consequences of, of doing this. And, you know, I'm just not so sure how much of, of, of a deterrent, just increasing the fines is going to be anyway, just as a general principle, over other ways of looking for compliance to our codes and getting out and enforcing our codes. So I guess I'm going to approach this with some degree of skepticism and just see what, what you guys come back with on it.
Counselor Mendigle?
I would echo that skepticism. I understand the incentive aspect, but if there's a flurry of violations that are issued, you know, it is going to raise questions. Is this kind of a revenue center here? And then also I do look forward to the cost benefit analysis because we are in an economic slowdown and I don't want this to become kind of a make-work program for people that would otherwise be doing, you know, building remodel inspections or whatever. So I do look forward to that analysis. Thank you.
Counselor Mardan?
Well, I support it because I think a lot of people in our city, one of the complaints I get is there's a violation and nothing is being done. And there's a real frustration from residents when, when that happens, if they're a neighbor and they see things not being taken care of. So if this gives us another tool to help the neighbors have a happier life, then I think it's worthwhile.
You know, just to answer that though, Nancy, I, I think, because I get those same complaints, you know, about people, but part of it is that a lot of people want it done now, you know. I mean, the guy can't take his illegal addition down today. I mean, it takes time, and, and I understand that's, that's the job of you guys to kind of explain that to the neighbors, that we are working on it. I know Sharon gets those calls all the time. And it, it, it's a process.
I, I wasn't speaking so much in those senses, more in the conditional use permits where things seem to go on and on and on, and there's not a...
Well, again, that gets into what I was talking about, and I agree with you on that, in that sometimes we just tend to, we want to be nice guys and, you know, a lot of times these people that, you know, code, like, use permit violations, they're nice people, you know, we want to help them, and you don't want to give them a violation, but, you know, you get into that trap where now you're just, you know, nothing's getting done. I agree with you about that, yeah.
Well, I think what we get as council people, we get more of the complaints on the building and the use permit violations. And I was just curious, the, you have under code enforcement 225 citations. How many of those were water quality versus zoning issues? Just a rough percentage?
Water quality.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, well, I guess you guys will come back with something and we'll see what, what you come up with.
Thank you, and recognizing you'll be scrutinizing it closely. Thank you, counsel.
Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
This item came up thanks to Counselor Mendigle.
State your name, please.
W.R. Building. This came up thanks to Counselor Mendigle's Fourth of July and Boardwalk Safety Committee. The police department and the city attorney's office did an outstanding job. Not participating as a member of those committees, having attended the majority of them, I felt the general consensus was this was something that would help. In reference to the nuisance type of ordinance, if you look at the second sentence of the purpose of code enforcement, is intended to protect and preserve public health and safety, the charm of our residential neighborhoods, and the overall quality of life enjoyed by Newport Beach residents. I would like to invite any one of you to come to my address, and I will take you on a walk of four blocks. Two of them, I believe, are adjacent to the Bellboa specific plan. We're in the Bellboa Improvement District. They're a disaster. Now, code enforcement has worked in the past. I've had seven eye surgeries since May of '04, and I'm trembling so bad now, and hopefully the doctor can take care of that, that I, I'm a two-handed mouse user and trying to type and whatnot, I have a heck of a time. But I bet you I have 15 files where I've taken photographs, trying to put things together, and they may have to have some additional help, but I'm willing to do it. But my approach on this, when I'm going to file a complaint, which I have in the past, worked in the city attorney's office over illegal occupancy, I had the original plans because I built the building, I'm willing to do a lot of the investigative work because it costs the taxpayers money, I'm the one that's really going to benefit. But as far as increased fines, from my 40 years of experience in various municipalities and counties and whatnot, to hire the fine, the better off you are to comply immediately, and it will be done until somebody tells you with a little teeth, if you're going to bark and bite, you better have sharp teeth. And I think that's what it is. Many of the complaints, my complaints, if I lived in a development that had CCNRs, I would go to the homeowners association. All these nuisance ordinances, I imagine you came about because of complaints to staff. Well, look at that neighborhood, it's well-preserved, but they're taking care of it themselves. We don't have CCNRs. We had private pride and ownership back in the 50s and 60s. It's deteriorated. Majority of the property owners, I feel, as treasurer of Central Newport Beach Community Association between the two peers, are absent. So many of them are rentals. They don't care as long as the income comes in. So I highly encourage you to really look at this and consider it. Staff, I think, has done a great job. Code enforcement, the police department, the city attorney's office, and I for one appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll take public comments on non-agenda items. Anybody want to comment on that? Seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session.